Everyone, thank you both so much for coming to our Will I Am at Week endorsement interview. This is for Zone One of the Portland Public School Board. Just a quick couple of logistical things. Sorry, I'm using my phone. The computer's over there, obviously. We're going to try to get to attempt to know both of you over this next forty-five minutes to an hour. We don't guarantee equal time. Not the biggest problem in two-person endorsements. But, you know, we may riff off on, you know, one of your answers if we think it's interesting. Doesn't really indicate who we like the best and not really structured like a debate, but you're more than happy to respond, you know, to a reasonable extent to each other if you want to. Yeah, and then to start, I would just love a two-minute introduction. So, current occupation, name, current occupation, what experience you have in public service, and why school board?
Sure.
Yeah, and Ken, we can start with you.
Yeah, so Ken Cavignolo. I think my last name is the thing that people struggle with the most. Current occupation, so I'm an executive in the technical AI world. So I lead groups of teams building stuff. Prior governmental experience, limited to activities like associated with NASA, Center for Astronomy Education. Sat on the board for a hands-on science partnership group that did lobbying advocacy in Washington DC. And then, you know, various volunteer activities. What else did you want to know?
Um, just why school board?
Oh, yeah, why school board? So I do not have kids, and my wife and I do not have children. So naturally, we don't have anybody in the PPS system. I'm a public school kid. Everything I have in my life, I kind of owe to my public education. Without it, I don't know exactly what opportunities I would have had in life. And I hate the idea that there are kids out there like me, and more importantly, not like me, that just quite frankly don't have that opportunity anymore. So instead of being a critic and sitting on the sidelines, decided, you know, this was the right time to get involved. So threw my hat in the ring for public service.
For sure. Brian, I'm so sorry. My pen is out of ink. Can you mind grabbing another pen? But Kristi, go ahead while I'm doing this.
Sure, sure. I also have a pen if you have any issues. I always have like so many pens. My name's Kristy Split. I always have extra pens.
I just have all these black ones, and I always think that one of them has ink, and then it's always the one that doesn't.
Yeah, you're fine. Uh, yeah, so Kristy Split. And nobody really is too hard of a time with my last name, but it is interesting, so that's fine. So my occupation is I am a government relations coordinator for a state agency where I coordinate our agency's work approaching legislation. And also, the agency I work for does a lot of sort of think tank work. So we're also just generally paying attention to climate and energy policy across the board.
Which agency just?
Oh, the Oregon Department of Energy. I generally am somewhat coy about it. Now I'm on an interview not being coy about it because I just don't really know how to, you know, balance being a state worker and also campaigning for office. So my experience in public schools is starts at the same place as yours. I was also a public school kid all the way through college. I did get my master's in education from a private school. But other than that, all public schools all the way. And I moved around a lot, so I got to experience a lot of different types of public schools in different parts of the country where there was variation in the funding and quality of those schools. And that experience, and then having frankly sort of a magical experience, my senior year of high school doing Constitution Team, which is a big deal here in Portland too, but this was at a school in California, led me to actually become a history and social studies teacher at a college. So I taught for a few years. I accidentally fell out of teaching. I didn't know I was leaving teaching. I took a summer internship working on campaigns, and I never really looked back. I've been working in and around the Oregon Legislature ever since. And I also continued to do work in schools. So I was a Constitution Team coach here at a public school in Portland for twelve years, where we won three national championships, which was an amazing experience, and really got to see academic excellence on display and be really close to teenagers who are capable of so much and have so much to bring to the table in decision-making. And then when I had my own kids, I immediately, as soon as my kids started school, you know, worked alternate schedules so that I would have time to volunteer every Friday for lunch. I became the PTA president pretty quickly. I'm now the PTA treasurer at our school. So I've just been really deeply engaged and seeing really up close and personal the divide between the district and the schools is what encouraged me to run. I really want to see a school system where it's not like an us versus them, but where really the schools and the district are working together on behalf of our kids. So just kind of seeing that, that the situation like on the ground at my kid's school, where we've had cuts for the last four years, really motivated me to raise my hands for the board when the vacancy happened and I got the appointment in January.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to hear from both of you just some of the bigger problems that you see facing Portland Public Schools, and I mean, I guess how that influences some of the priorities that you have in school board as well. You know, feel free to go outside of, you know, just the problems you see. But I'm Ken, I can start with you again.
Sure, yeah. Of that limited number of lead behinds that I brought, there's one that I put together, I think, that tells a story. I like kind of the image. Graduation rates over the last fourteen years, they're up. That's fantastic. It's always good when, you know, kids are getting their high school diplomas. That opens up a lot of doors. Like that's, uh, that is a pathway to substantial amount of achievement in life. However, over that same time period, and this is where it gets dodgy, like whatever metric you'd like to use for determining achievement. It's very broad terminology, a lot of measures and metrics for that. They are all systematically declining. So by what percentage, and so basically at what rate? That's debatable, but the fact is that they are going down. And, you know, as of a decade ago, those achievement scores normalized to about half what they were. So for me, the issue is pretty straightforward. Like it's in the name, public education. It's about kids learning and attaining, for example, like a lifelong desire to learn, learning how to learn, you know, opening up that window in their mind to creative thinking, critical thinking. So when I think about, you know, what is the number one issue facing the school system? To me, that's it. Because if the public education system isn't designed around that, if it's not intended for making sure that students are achieving at a level where it's giving them opportunities later on in life, I honestly wonder kind of like, what's the point? I don't mean that derogatory as in, oh, public education shouldn't exist. Absolutely has to. It is the one singular opportunity for most of the people who can't afford a different type of education, like private, like charter, like a voucher. And of course, there's the obvious stuff, which is funding, the budget, which is extremely complicated and hard to understand. And additionally, educators, you know, just coming out of the strike, you know, last year, they don't feel empowered to do their jobs. So when I look at this, I kind of think, well, this is a toxic stew. You have students who aren't achieving, educators who don't like their jobs, and then not enough money going into the system and being spent the right way. And it's like, wow, this is definitely, so to me, those are like the three pillars of things that need to be fixed in the system.
When you say achievement, can you kind of define that a little bit more broadly?
Sure, yeah. So there's the obvious, the obvious metrics across English language are science and math, right? So those standardized tests and scores. So I think that's one way that I lean towards defining achievement because there are others. Like, let's be honest, not everybody's a great student. I was a terrible student, right? And so if you had looked at me, for example, just from the scores that I was delivering on tests and quizzes and standardized exams, you might say, this is a low achieving student. But there are other ways that students can demonstrate that they are learning and that they're quote-unquote achieving. So for example, it could be, you know, after-school activities. It could be special projects. It could be their contributions to the school through, there's a lot of different metrics. But at the baseline, you do have test scores that kind of try to normalize, both at the national level, the state level, the local level. And to me, that's a pretty good metric. And like I said, you know, we can debate whether or not those numbers are representative of some sort of true definition of achievement. But the trend doesn't lie, and the trend is down to the right. And to me, that's just the overarching problem.
For sure. Kristi, go ahead.
Honestly, I totally agree with you, which is, is good, I think. But part of the reason we totally agree is because it's fairly obvious, right, that we have these major issues in our schools. I think even on talking about test scores and achievement, it's so nuanced. It's like a big part of me, having been a teacher, knows that test scores don't tell the whole story. I've got a kid, for example, who has off-the-chart test scores, but she doesn't really like apply herself. And so she's, you know, not meeting. She like tests better than she actually does in school, I would say. And she's gonna watch this, and I'll be like, Mom! But I think it's just a perfect example that, you know, you can't always just tell based on test scores. But it's also what we have. And I'd also argue it's what everyone looks at to judge the quality of a school. And we can talk about changing that in the long term, but in the short term, your paper, other papers, legislators, what they care about, what they want to see is those test scores. And that is just reality. And we're not going to have a strong public education system if people see these low test scores and assume the schools are failing. Now, I spend a lot of time in a school, and I can tell you that there's kids that I know whose test scores might be very low, but are who are wonderful kids and are great in school. And you wouldn't know that their test scores are low, that they'll, you know, this is, they, they're having a positive educational experience. So I think something that I view as an issue is people looking at those test scores and assuming our public schools are the problem and choosing to go to private school, which is what's happened at my school where we've had declining enrollment, and we have seen families opt to go to private school, especially the ones who just go right from kindergarten. You're like, give us a chance. Like I think our, my kids are having a wonderful public education. So are hundreds of kids at our school. When you ask those kids, when the district asks those kids how they feel at our school, they feel at home and welcome and comfortable. And, you know, they're having a good experience. And so how can we help families to like see that, come back to our schools that have chosen to leave? So I'll add declining enrollment to your list.
Sure.
But that's, that's another pressing issue that I'll, I'll add to.
What do you have to say? Yeah, for sure. I guess I'm curious to hear like a follow-up, how you would tackle those issues as, you know, you're a current board member, but you know, in the next term as well, if you were to be elected, you know, what do you see as kind of the scope of power in the school board? And, you know, how can you apply that to influence both outcomes, declining enrollment, other issues you might have?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. And honestly, I mean, I think Sophie probably knows too, but you certainly know, and I'm sure you know, I'm brand new to the school board. So I have like all the, I feel like I get the responsibilities of being an incumbent, but I'm also like, I'm brand new here. I'm still trying to figure it out. And I have to say, that is the one thing that I have been a little bit surprised about is that now that I'm in the space, that I am so experienced working in public policy and at the same time, I'm kind of still trying to figure out what is my role and what kind of power do I have to influence what's happening at the district or beyond. What I can tell you though is, working on it, regular conversations, you know, the budget's coming up. We have our, we're gonna see the big budget. We're gonna be talking about it on Tuesday. I'm getting it today so that I can get prepared for Tuesday. And as you said, it's a super dense document. You know, looking at it for the first time as a board member, and by Tuesday, being ready to talk about it will certainly be a big challenge. So I think, generally speaking, I don't think it's easy to figure out how you find your place of power as a school board member to make change. That said, I can tell you my general approach. I'm a team player. I've worked in public policy for twenty years, just about, and I've generally been a consensus builder. I'm not afraid to call people out, and I'm also somebody that is straight up and honest and candid all the time, sometimes to my detriment, I'll be honest. And I think that that personality trait and experience in a school board member will mean hopefully that I'll be viewed as like supportive and a partner, but always also somebody who's gonna shine a light. And actually, I want to be part of a district where the district is saying, shine a light on us. Like shine it, we're doing good work, we want you to see it. Like that's the kind of approach that I want to see is the district saying, okay, like let's be open and transparent, and I think we're working on it with new leadership. You know, there was kind of a culture of fear, we have to look good all the time. I want to see that changed, where we're more just an honest school district going forward. And I think everyone's there. I don't think there's like some big corruption or anything, but I'm just saying there's like more of a fear. And so I think my role can be like, okay, let's not worry about that. Let's worry more about like, how do we solve the problems rather than trying to pretend they're not there? So, you know, that's, I think, the number one piece that I would want to bring to the table in a leadership role is sort of helping us all to open the door so that we can tackle the problems together instead of, you know, maybe sometimes glossing them over.
Sure. Ken, I'm gonna get to you in one second with the same question, but I would be curious. I know you mentioned earlier, you know, you show independence and you're not afraid to call people out. Can you give an example, you're very short time on the school board?
Oh, on the school board?
Anything where you might feel that you've, you know, influenced or done something you feel proud to be independent of?
This is like not a big deal, but like literally the very first thing was like looking at a calendar for next year, and in like the fine print, it was talking about kindergarten soft start. This is funny, it's like the first time I talked. It's kind of a small example, but if this is the first time I talked, the first thing I was saying is like, hey, I think you all need to do a better job communicating about kindergarten soft start. For those who don't know kindergarten soft start, kindergarten starts early. And you just kind of know it starts early, and then like the teachers come back from break on like August twenty-third or something. And they're like, hey, next week, you need to be here, here, and here. You're not gonna have childcare and your work, but you're gonna have to have your kid here, sign up for the time, and then your kid's gonna do a half-day. Now we're gonna tell you which day. And it just leaves, I think, a lot of parents in an uncomfortable position. And it might sound like a small thing, but it was like the first time I talked and I was like, hey, we should do better on this. I wasn't about to just sit there and be like, it's in the fine print, whatever, calendar. It was like, no, this is actually an opportunity to speak up for something that I hear about all the time as somebody who's kind of served as like an informal welcome wagon with kindergarten families at our school for the last four years. You know, trying to explain that to people, us being the ones as the school, getting out that communication so people understand the uncertainty. But like, why can't we just fix the uncertainty and make it like, if your last name is Owens, you're gonna be on Friday, and if your last name is, you know, Baird, you're gonna be on Thursday. And, you know, just, we could make it so much better.
Sure.
So it's a small example, but if that's my approach all the time, sharing my experience as a parent or as a community member to try to fix things and make them better for families and kids at our schools, that's what I'll do.
For sure. Ken, I'd love to hear kind of the same thing. You know, how do you see the scope of the school board? How do you, you know, see yourself within it, especially in relation to some of the problems that you listed?
Yeah, I apologize. This is gonna be probably the second time you've heard this answer.
That's okay.
So to me, it's in the name. So it is the, it is the board. And so I think of this very much like, look, PPS has a billion-dollar, you know, well, which depending on which phone we want to talk about, there's billions of dollars in place. This is, and it has, you know, in the neighborhood of, I'm gonna approximate fifty, you know, fifty thousand students, we obviously like to be higher. Plus you have tens of thousands of staff and educators, everybody across the system. This is a big organization. You know, if it were a business, it would be one of the largest businesses in Portland, in the whole metro area. And so education is not a business, and I think it's a critical thing. I don't want anybody to, you know, leave with the impression that I'm, you know, one of these people that thinks of, you know, that the government and government services are supposed to be run like businesses, they're supposed to generate profits, or any of that kind of nonsense. It's not, it's a service. But there is the business of running the public education system. And when I think of it in those terms, I come back to the board. You know, it is the Portland Public School Board, and they have an advisory, advisory responsibility to establish a vision for the school district, a cohesive vision that can then be represented in the form of a mission that is defined with, for example, the help of the superintendent, who in my mind is kind of like the CEO. I mean, we actually have, I mean, we have an entire C-suite for the PPS. I mean, it's not only in the think of this like a business organization. And from that perspective, it's, um, it's a business organization that's struggling, especially if the mission is to, for example, provide a great workplace for educators. If it's a place that's supposed to be serving the public good and interest and being a good steward of the public funds. If it's supposed to be providing, for example, student outcomes that we measure in the form of achievement, or for example, upward mobility. If we're closing equity gaps across the city, if we're making sure that, you know, schools are all receiving similar resources and programs, it's not achieving that mission. So when I think about what I would do on the board, it is to take that approach. It is to say, what is the vision of the PPS board? And I can tell you right now, I don't actually know what that is. I've watched all the meetings, I've read all the transcripts. I've spent, you know, since I started thinking about this, consuming as much information as I possibly can. And it's not obvious to me what the mission of PPS is at this moment, nor what the vision is. So that's the first, because if you have those in hand, you can start to lay out, well, what are the priorities? And those are the things I've called out before, right? So for me, the priorities are, number one, student achievement. Two, we've got a pretty severe funding issue, and that rolls up to, you know, local and state. And we have a lot of representatives who just quite frankly aren't doing their job to represent the public interest, especially when it comes to public education in Portland and the state. The next is that the budget is a little complicated. It's kind of hard to follow where one dollar flows into the system and where it winds up. Like you literally can't follow it through. Like there's all these layers of complexity that allow these dollars to move around. And so when it comes to, you know, evaluating the efficacy of one particular program and what we're spending on it, unless there's a line item for it in the budget, I mean, best of luck because you're not gonna, you're not gonna figure that out. And then the other is, you know, with educators, the people who are responsible for doing this work. They're obviously passionate because from the outside looking in, these are not really jobs that I think that anybody would kind of frankly want on face value. And so you have, I mean, if there's anything that anybody who's ever worked in an organization says, having a dedicated, passionate workforce is the first critical element to fixing, for example, a broken company or business or entity, public service like PPS. So to me, that's where you start. Think of it as the whole system and start to slice it up into these strategic priorities, and then start to identify, okay, as a board member, to facilitate and advise, more importantly, to remove roadblocks. What can we do to help the superintendent and the PPS staff start to put in place fixes for the things that are broken? And really dial in like, I mean, a relentless focus on those priorities. All the other stuff that's very interesting, could be valuable, you know, you know, could be fun, that's good stuff to have if the system were running really effectively right now, and it's not. And so for me, pulling back and really focusing on those core priorities, that's the key, is a relentless focus on just a handful of things. That's the reason I brought, you know, this, I tote this around me, this first hundred days that superintendent put together, because I don't completely agree with the priorities that are laid out, but I think this is the right kind of view. Keep it simple. I mean, there's three things that, you know, Superintendent Armstrong lays out. It's that kind of thinking that I think is effective. So that's what I would try to accomplish on the board. I'm one person, so key piece of that is buy-in. I can be, I can be convinced, I can negotiate with others. I like to ask lots of questions and to listen. I obviously have a passion for data. I have, you know, deep interest in, you know, evidence-based, research-backed initiatives and programs. And so I think that's where my mind would, you know, when it comes to thinking about how we would rectify some of these problems with PPS, that's where my mind goes to, like working with others. But at the same time, I think one of my most valuable assets in running for the board is that I'm not, I'm not a politician. This is not a stepping stone for me. I have no background in this. I am an outsider that just cares deeply about, you know, this mission of, you know, providing, you know, students a great education. And so there are certain things I just won't compromise on. And I think that, you know, at the top of that list, I keep mentioning student achievement. There, those are just certain things I won't, I will say, you know, that you can't deprioritize them.
Yeah, when you say you don't really know what the vision of the school board is, do you have a, you know, a vision in mind for like what would you want it to look like?
This is, so I've only lived in Portland since December of 2020. So my wife and I moved out here from the south.
Funny timing.
Yeah, exactly. Kind of an interesting title to draw. My family has been in Oregon for, I think, twenty-five, thirty years, something like that. My aunt has lived all over. My cousin was the first one to come up here to Portland in the nineties. And so I've been out here, I'm familiar with Portland and Oregon in general. But the, yeah, so, I'm sorry, I lost the.
No, what's the vision of?
Yeah, the vision, yes, exactly. So I wanted to contextualize that. I haven't been here very long. But in all of our time here in Portland thus far, you know, whenever the edge of the school system comes up, like when we were buying homes, and when other people are moving here and they're buying homes, there's kind of this general refrain that Portland schools aren't great. There's just a negative sentiment. And I would like to think that four, six years from now, that when somebody thinks that, like the things that we could accomplish for the public education system, when people think about Portland schools, when they think about kids that came out of Portland schools, they think Portland schools are pretty good, right? Those students are probably pretty smart, like they're creative, they're interesting, they're well-adapted. They, you know what I mean? And all that positive sentiment, that's what I want. Because all the quantifiable stuff, it rolls up into that, just the impression that you get. Because that matters. And so is that a vision? I mean, I think so. It can be quantified, of course, but that's what I would like to see. I'd like to see overall positive sentiment about Portland schools. I think it's important.
Kristi, do you have a general idea of what you think the vision of the board is right now? If one exists, or what you'd like to?
Yeah, I mean, he's, he pointed out the, this document right there, which is also what I got handed when I started on the school board and have kind of viewed it as what we're headed into. We do have an interesting situation because the mission and vision of the school board was set prior to us having the current superintendent. And for anybody who's met Dr. Armstrong, and you've met her, right? I think she's, she's meeting with all the candidates. She's just really great. And I'd love to be open-minded about her, you know, working with the new school board and her, if I'm part of it, to develop a newer, updated mission or vision based on, you know, where we are now and who's in charge. But this, which has sort of laid out visions around, for example, literacy and goals around literacy is what I view as sort of our current, even though it's not technically what's etched. When you walk into the district, the mission is right in front of you when you walk in. And also a big bulleted list of objectives. And if you stand there and point at it, there's all these things we're not doing. So to me, that means, okay, let's level up and decide how we're gonna change this list to make it so that one, if we're not getting to things, are they things we are taking seriously? I think mostly they are. For example, bringing up achievement particularly for kids of color. I mean, that's critically important. I would actually say that's my number one goal, is how do we make sure that those kids aren't continuing to fall through their cracks? Because they are falling through the cracks. And we have the right policies and the right values in place, it feels like, but it's not moving the needle. So I really think we need to take a closer look at those. The vision and values and where we have what we have on paper right now to make sure that it matches where we are in the current personnel and really the new leadership we have. Like you said, we have a new CEO, so to, so to speak. And when someone new comes in, I think it's important that you give them their own ability to move the organization forward and not rely on the goals or objectives of somebody who came before them.
Do you agree with that?
Yes. Well, so my, my background plays into this a little bit. So up until 2011, I was a professional academic, and then had to reinvent myself as a member of the business world. I prefer academia, like anybody that knows me. I'm more than happy to talk about the failings of sort of American, the American business system. But when I bring, so there is something about having that mindset, and it is that when someone new comes into a leadership role, especially a C-suite leadership role at an organization, you are left with the detritus of all the mistakes that everybody that's come before you, full stop. And you don't get the benefit of the honeymoon. It doesn't, you know, nobody cares. It doesn't matter. And that's, that's harsh to say because you'd like to think, well, it takes time to make, you know, adjustments and corrections to maybe programs that were broken, to make, you know, fixes to, for example, the budget, like the spending, like untangling that budget is, that is a, that is a really difficult task, especially with a limited number of people in the finance office at PPS that are responsible for that. So like I said, there's no honeymoon, you don't want to be held responsible for that. But the fact of the matter is, nobody cares. The public doesn't care because the school year continues. You know, time is the thing that you never get back. And so my opinions of Superintendent Armstrong, I don't really have any because hasn't been on the job very long. I, you know, I love this approach, this kind of business mindset approach to running the public education system. I think that's the right way to think about it. Plus, there is a lot of stuff that's out of the central office's control when it comes to running the organization. Like if we were a real, like if PPS was a real actual business, we'd have control over, you know, our revenue streams, our overall operating costs. Like there's a lot of things that we could, we could handle and deal with that we wouldn't need these dependencies on these external, for example, like the state legislature. And so the city government, you know, one of the things that you brought up was declining enrollment, right? Well, a big piece of that as well is, you know, it's represented as, it's a bit of a disingenuous name, the fertility rate in Portland. You know, why is that declining? Why aren't there more students? Well, part of it is because, as you've seen, people are fleeing the metro area. Is that the fault of the superintendent of the public school system? No, it's the city government's fault. And this is an externality that you also have to then deal with. So when I think of the responsibilities the superintendent has, what an, what an unbelievably difficult job. However, being able to identify the things that you do have control over, that's the critical aspect. And so in this, you know, first hundred days document and seeing the priorities, there's a good mix. Hey, here's stuff we have control over. There's also a little bit of a mix of stuff that we don't have control over, There's also a little bit of a mix of stuff that we don't have control over. And so I question like, maybe we could deprioritize that. And the things that we don't have control over, they function basically as blockers. So for example, let's talk about, you know, funding. Funding issues at the state level. Well, maybe then the PPS should, board should be stepping in as more of an activist group, help organizing, you know, pushing agenda, helping write bills, like being much more involved in those upstream, um, those, those upstream blockers that maybe we, we actually can't turn the knob on directly. So I, I don't want to keep going on here, but that, that's the way I think about it is really just, yeah, focus on what you can put your hands on.
I see Christie smiling.
Well, I wanted to say something, because you probably know, but do you know that I'm doing all of this advocacy work?
Sure, yeah.
Like that that's what I'm pouring, like so much of my time and energy into and have for the last two years. And thinking, and as a school board member subsequently too, but even before that.
Yeah.
That's like been my, I don't know, my side hustle, my side hustle on the side of my side hustle, because I'm also like PTA mom. Um, but also doing a lot of legislative advocacy. Um, I just want you to know that that's something that I really take very seriously and I totally agree board members should do that. But I am a board member doing that.
So this is, when, when I'm, this is funny, when we were introduced for the first time, people always ask me, you know, about Christie. I said, no, so it's always been tough. Um, I, 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 in interviews, I comment, I think this came up in our interview, um, I think you're a great candidate. And they, you know, people ask about, well, what differentiates us? And I think this is the key difference.
Great. My next question, just start, go.
So, um, you, you, all of the advocacy efforts, I a hundred percent agree with. I am a bit more of a, um, I'm a bit of a different candidate in regards to, I don't, advocacy is great. I believe more in activism. Um, I mean, one of the main reasons that I also decided to run is I'm a bit frustrated with talk. Talk is fine. Um, that's, you know, it's effective when you're dealing with faithful negotiators, faithful agents. And especially at the state level, we are not dealing with faithful actors. Uh, at the federal level, we are not dealing with faithful actors. And what I mean by that is that they don't believe in the rule set that the rest of us are abiding by. And so in those circumstances, even here sometimes at the city, city level, the metro level, um, I think about especially, for example, like some of the, you know, um, Multnomah County programs that are being overfunded right now. The difficulty I have is, is that activist or advocacy and trying to negotiate with people who kind of take that approach of exploiting your willingness to negotiate with them, they're taking advantage of you essentially. And so my response to that is, well, that's great. So if we are dealing, for example, with like state representatives that don't really seem to be interested in putting forth the effort to represent their districts that are right here and getting us to critical funding for certain programs that we need in PPS, I'd love to have them come and talk to the board. I'd love to have them in front of a camera answering questions that we're giving them and have them explain to the public, the people that they represent. That's their job. Why they're not doing that job on behalf of the parents that rely on them. Many of the parents, by the way, don't have the time to go to the polls and vote because they're working. And so in some ways, they're not actually represented by these people because they don't get the chance to actually interact with them. And so to me, that's the kind of more confrontational activist approach I'd like to see, especially from the PPS, because it does wield a tremendous amount of power. And that's, I think, the big differentiator is that's where I sort of just stray over more into, um, sometimes, yeah, you just have to say, I believe in something and this is the way it's going to be. And challenge someone who is opposing that view to say no, as opposed to giving them the opportunity to negotiate with you and take advantage of you.
Christie, do you have a response to that?
Well, it's really interesting. That's an interesting perspective. Um, you know, I'd say it's funny to, again, we have a met, so you don't know me, but I've worked most of my career sort of being a bit of an outsider, working in the legislature. For example, I worked for a legislator who was a Portland Democrat, didn't take PAC money, didn't have labor endorsements for the most part, was kind of an independent progressive legislator. So I had that experience when I first started working in the Capitol. Then I worked for a moderate Democrat when they were the co-speaker, also kind of a different experience than one might expect. And then I've worked for an environmental nonprofit where we were the sort of environmental activists of the legislature. And I've been a person who's held legislators accountable, like in real time as my career in many cases, um, particularly kind of from the environmental perspective, sort of on the left, and helping to bring legislators with us so that we could handle really tough problems related to climate change, energy, pollution. I could name several bills that I've helped make better and help bring, um, the majority along when we had issues. And oftentimes that took tough conversations. Um, I love consensus and so that is generally my model. But I'm also candid and honest and that can get me in trouble sometimes in the legislature. I think I have a bunch of legislator endorsements, and I was joking with my husband about it, that probably every single one of them knows when they see me, when they see me now, what they think is schools. And what they feel is, is guilt because they know they're not doing enough for our schools because I'm there holding them accountable along with other parents. So I guess I just want to make it clear to anyone who's listening, I really don't think I'm like a shrinking violet, just because this has been my career. I've gotten a lot of things done, um, by being tough, but also by having a reputation for being able to work with folks. I think there's room for both, um, both approaches for sure. Um, but I honestly feel like I get things done with that kind of combination approach pretty darn well. And I'm proud of my record working in the Capitol. And, um, I think that working in the school board, I'll have that same approach and style. And I think I will be able to get things done for our schools.
What do you see as the biggest difference between the two of you?
Probably experience in the schools. Yeah. I mean, I think everything you're saying, I, it's like, I agree with you on a lot of these big picture issues. But, um, the fact that I spend so much time in a school, have intimate experience working with, um, you know, every staff member, you know, like today I was folding up cafeteria tables at lunch with our custodian and talking to her about how many kids have been sick today. I mean, it's just like that, those types of interactions and conversations, just that on-the-ground understanding of what's happening in our schools. I just think it's really critically important, especially because the district has, it's changing with our new superintendent, but the relationship between our district and our schools has just been really distant. And having somebody that can come in and kind of help to bridge those gaps, I think, is really important. So I do think that's a, a big difference that I have in addition to, you know, I did start my career as an educator too.
Go ahead, Zoe.
Um, yeah, just a couple of questions for, for both of you. I'll start with you, Christie. Um, you know, you say your top priority is making sure that kids of color have the same opportunities as, uh, um, you know, white kids. And I think, excuse me for being jaded, but I think every single candidate that has ever come in has said that's their number one priority. And yet over and over and over again, we see the achievement gap widen. So what are you going to do differently? If you could be as specific as possible about a program that you want to look at or launch or something that you really want to dig into, because again, we, we hear this, we hear this all the time and very little actually happens. What are you going to do differently?
Thanks for asking. That is such a good point. I'm sure. I love, I love the, um, I don't know. I, I'm sure that's what we all say. Um, so one thing, I've, I've had a couple of things on my mind on this issue, but I'll just give one example and then we'll see if I flow into a second. But off, the main thing that I would focus on is actually something I noticed looking at teacher retention rates across our school. Um, I was, I was looking at my own school. My own school is like interesting. It's like a perfect microcosm of the district. We have about thirty percent underserved kids at our school. We are just shy of being a Title I school. So, um, and of our underserved kids, about fifteen to twenty percent live at a public housing, um, in the Hillsdale neighborhood. So we have some quite low-income kids at our school. And, um, the experience that I've had is that at our school, we have pretty good teacher retention. It's not great. So I was like wondering, it seems like we have good teacher retention. How is our teacher retention? And then I looked and you could pro, I, you could probably look at teacher retention and say, this is the richest school in the district and the teacher retention, the, the average number of years someone's been teaching is like twenty. And then you would go to the lowest and I, it's the, it's the schools that have the lowest scores. So to me, I would really want to take a look at how do we encourage teachers, um, new teachers that are excellent, excited to get to work, can't, I mean, my daughter has a second-year teacher. She's amazing. How do we get teachers like that to work in schools like mine or schools that also have even more diversity and lower test scores than mine? And not have them want to drift off to the schools like Bridal Mile. Sorry, not to pick on Bridal Mile, they're my next-door school, but that have very, very few kids that are on free reduced lunch. It's an easier ride, right? So, um, one idea that I've, I'm really interested in, and I'd love to talk to the teachers' union about this because, um, I think it's something that they have maybe concerns with, or it hasn't happened here and they're maybe considered the reason why. But in a lot of places, you pay teachers more for either staying at Title I schools or schools that have a higher number of low-income students or students of color. And, um, and then, then that makes it so that you get kind of the best and brightest edu, best and brightest educators. Um, data has shown over and over again that the best way to get test scores up is excellent teaching. So how do we bring our best teachers to those schools that are kind of deemed in a way the most difficult? Um, and that would be something, whether it's increased pay or, or other approaches, that's something I think I would really want to tackle because all you have to do is look at how long teachers have been at schools in Portland and you can see that that's certainly an issue here as well.
Great, thank you. And then, um, you know, speaking of the teachers' union, um, Christie, I'm hoping you can reflect a little bit on the teacher's strike in the fall of 2023. You know, I think there was a lot of, uh, frustration from parents who felt like the union made some real missteps during that, that elongated that strike past what it had to be. Uh, how, how, how would you sort of grade the union's behavior and the steps they took during that? And would you have done anything differently had you been in leadership?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Um, if I'd been on the school board at the time, how would I have handled that differently? Is that what you're after?
Yeah, she wants you to kind of.
More like if I was a leadership within the union, how I might have handled it differently.
Well, I think, I mean, I, I would, um.
So she wants you to rate kind of the, the, you know, the grade, the general. Teachers' union leadership and then from your board, if you were in power in the board.
And the board, yeah. So first of all, I just want to say, um, I supported the strike. A big part of the reason I supported the strike was because I was in our school. From the minute we went back into classrooms, I was actually holding together lunch staffing because we didn't have staff for lunch. That's how I fell into weekly lunch volunteering. I was doing a whole lot more early on in the pandemic, like return to school times. And, um, from that moment on, I have just seen essentially needs at our school go unmet, where it just takes forever to get responses. Um, you know, we didn't have the staffing we needed. We have two district special education classrooms. We love having those kids and families as part of our community, but we had staffing crises. We still do. Anytime we lose a staff member, there was no, we were missing a staff member today in that classroom and it, you could, you could tell. Um, and so, um, so I think the frustration level between the schools and the teachers and the educators and staff and the district had just gotten so high and just things weren't changing and getting done. And I think the strike was odd, was like, in the end, what it was, was the thing that to me was a catalyst for change. Um, we have a new superintendent. They're listening to the schools. Um, they would, would tell you too, that the disconnect between the district and the schools is a huge issue. Um, and so to me, in the end, while it was super tough as a working parent, like super tough as a working parent, and I sure wish it had been shorter. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record as saying, I think it, in the end, made a positive difference for our schools and our, and our families in the long run. Um, and hopefully it will help to like get better working conditions and also better conditions in our classrooms for our kids. Um, I still, I, I want to answer, go back to answering your question. So, yeah, because I didn't, and I know I didn't, but I wanted to set it up. Um, but having said all of that, um, there was definitely discrepancy in the math. And I still don't understand why the discrepancy in the math. So at first there was, um, DO, uh, the Oregon Department of Education had a typo in something that said that we had a higher, it was like, it said we had sixty-one percent admin. Really, it was like fifty-five, something like that. I'm not going to get the numbers right. But first there was the, we have way more admin. But then the DO, the, um, Department of Education fixed that, but then that, that statistic was still going around. I mean, I still hear it all the time. Like, don't we have like sixty percent admin? And actually it's down below fifty at this point because of cuts last year. And so, um, so I just, that's kind of turned around, but that has been a pervasive, um, concern of people that we have the highest admin in the state, things like that, that I don't think are true because getting that corrected didn't happen. And then there were just differences in opinion and what sort of resources the district had. And I think really in the end, what the reality is, is I think teachers would agree, the resources weren't there. Um, and they couldn't get all the things that they wanted because there just wasn't enough money. And so do I wish that that had been arrived at sooner? Absolutely. Because those last couple of weeks of the strike wound up falling pretty darn close to the ice storm. My kids missed a ton of school. It was really hard on families and kids, um, and educators. Um, and, and, and so, um, yeah, so had I, do I wish it had been shorter, but just as impactful? Absolutely. And do I wish there'd been, um, if had the numbers been correct or better understood? But I guess that goes back to Ken's concerns about how hard it is to navigate the PPS budget.
Can you just kind of elaborate briefly on if you were in leadership, what you would have done?
Oh, what I've done differently, sure. Um, well, for starters, I think there were some people that are on the board that managed to maintain like positive relationships with the teachers. And I think that is something I would really strive for. Like, let's disagree, but like, can we avoid being disagreeable? Um, and so I think that also starts with building relationships before bargaining. We are going to be back in bargaining in November. And so to me, I want to start in a good place where they know I'm listening. I care deeply about teachers and staff. I was a teacher. Uh, but also we have limited resources and I want to make sure our kids are getting what they need. And so if everybody knows where I stand, um, so I think really what I would have done is rewound way before the strike, all the way back before the bargaining. And had we just had much better relationships, much less conflict, um, between the board, some particular board members and the union, I think that would have helped to maybe not even get to the strike.
Um, I'm, I'm just going to drill down on this a little bit.
Sure, please do.
And I know this is a difficult issue and I think everyone tries to talk around it because no one wants to see me anti-teacher, anti-union, and also no one wants to say that kids should have been out of school for that long.
Right.
But as part of the school board, we would have been in a very important position. I think it's easy to say, well, I would have better relationships and we never would have come to this point. But that, that's not what happens. Do you think, and you know, this isn't a yes-no answer, but I am asking you to be like a little bit more direct about it. Would you have done anything differently? Do you think the union took any missteps during the strike? Was it acceptable how long it dragged on?
No, I don't, like I said, I, I, I think it should have been shorter. Um, and I think some of the things that dragged it on had to do with, like I said, just a disagreement about numbers. Um, whether that was having the wrong numbers, seems like, maybe it was about having the wrong numbers, but it's hard to understand the PPS budget. So I, it's like, for me, it's hard to kind of point the finger at the union for that. Um, but, you know, I realize you maybe want me to, um, but I, yeah.
I know, I'm asking for a candidate for public office to take a, a stance on something that is of great importance.
Yeah, I mean, I, right.
For thousands of children.
Right, yeah, I, I hear you. I guess I'm just trying to think about what I would do differently in addition to having a better relationship with the union. But I think what you want to know is how I would do things differently if I was in the union.
I mean, no, I'm, I'm asking as a, you know, if you were a board member, I mean, I think any.
I don't, yeah.
Done things differently from any vantage point actually is a great, is a great and valid question.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just, I wish I knew what the board members could have done to shorten the strike. I just don't know what they did wrong that they could have done differently. It did seem like things got extremely contentious between this, the, between the union and striking teachers and families who supported the strike, like my family and board members. Um, and so to me, I guess one thing I would have done differently is like, I was getting emails from my own board member about the strike and about parents who supported it that were pretty offensive, honestly. And he and I have known each other a long time and I was like, hey, whoa, like, this is a little wild. So I do think being as adversarial as some of the board members chose to be is something I wouldn't have done. And I think it probably did back labor into more of a corner where they felt more defensive um, and more like emboldened than they might have felt if they had been treated with respect and, um, and with care and consideration. So I guess that's something I would have done differently than my own board member, um, just kind of keeping the temperature lower. Because the temperature got so high. And I think when the temperature is that high, people start making decisions that aren't necessarily the right ones for the long haul.
Sure, thank you. Um, Kevin, you, um, you know, it sounds like you are, you're big on sort of fiscal responsibility. Um, and like you said, the school district is not a business. It's not profit-making. It's not supposed to be profit-making. And yet there is a business element to running a district.
Sure.
And you said you've been listening in on, you know, school board meetings and looking at documents based on, you know, what you've learned over the past couple of months or years or whatever it's been. What is one place, one program in the district or one sort of budget line in the district that you think is maybe inefficient right now or should be cut or could be sort of re, I don't know, jiggered to something else? Like where, where would you shift money right now in the district?
Sure. Um, also, if you want to take the opportunity to ask me those same questions, I'm happy to field them as well. So, yeah, the budget, all right. Um, so one line item, so one line item that I would like to address. Well, I, okay, I, I can tie together two things. When I think about, you know, obviously student achievement's a big piece for me. And I think about what are the kind of programs that directly impact student achievement and outcomes? Usually it's early literacy, not usually, early literacy, talking about third grade, you know, competency is a huge piece. Currently, that program, um, receives special funding. Um, that special funding flows into the school district. It gets sliced up. It's then divvied out across schools within the district in ways that I wasn't actually capable of tracking very easily. And when I say tracking, I mean, they're taking numbers and putting them into spreadsheets, looking at the sanky diagrams of what comes in, what goes out. You had, you asked a question about, for example, equity programs and closing equity gaps. That's one key place. The equity gap is the largest currently in PPS across early literacy. And what I find fascinating about that is when you start to look at the programs across all, all the schools, those programs aren't implemented, uh, uniformly. They're not funded uniformly. They're funded in ways, in fact, you can't actually determine what school is getting what, what staff is being paid at point seven, point seven-two FTEs and it shifts around during, you know, certain times of the school year. And then additionally, um, the professional training, the teachers have asked for, educators have asked for to support these early literacy programs aren't being implemented not correctly, but uniformly. And so when I, I step back and I look at this, I go, okay, so let's think about one line item. One I like, one line item would be these early literacy programs. Making sure that they're uniform across the schools, making sure that we're able to track where they're. Making sure that we're able to track where that money is actually flowing into those programs.
Can I ask, when you say, when you say they're not uniform across the schools, what do you mean by not uniform? And what is, what is driving you to believe that they have to be exactly uniform across all schools? When like, if there are schools that do have a higher level of kids in poverty, right? They probably need more money.
Right. And well, here's, okay, so the direct answer to that question is they don't, not only do they not receive the same amount of money, they receive less. So we can forget the conversation about receiving more. And again, that's a bit of an assumption because I can't actually say with any certainty that those schools and those early literacy programs are receiving less or more. And I think that's one of the key problems is how do you track this money that's going into these programs? So, um, but yes.
Let me just break back on that one one more time.
Sure.
If we don't know where that money is going, or if, or if you don't know, you know, what money is going to what school or how that looks on the budget, how do we know it's not being spent well? Like, how, how do we know something needs to change if we, if you don't know where that money is going?
Right. So that, that, this is, so what you're referring to is a faith exercise. And in a lot of other circumstances, I would be okay with that, where you just say, I trust that this money is being doled out. And you asked a question about what do I mean by uniform? When I think of uniform, I think of, for example, staffing. I think of the material. I think of the program design. I think of its implementation, the timelines, how the evaluation is performed at the end of these program implementations. Um, so everything from, for example, reading and test score, or sorry, reading test scores. So, yeah, I, I would be more than happy to, to put my full faith and trust uh, that, you know, this money is flowing equally into these schools across these programs if we didn't have such a huge equity gap, like an actual measurable equity gap. And we didn't actually have a measurable, you know, lower performance at the state and the national level in these early reading programs, or sorry, early, uh, early literacy. And so for me, uh, you know, you, if, if you don't have any evidence that says these programs are effective, I can't just put my faith, blind faith and trust that things are running as expected. Like, that's just, no, that, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Jersey, um, I, I did both of you read the Oregon story last week about, uh, teacher absences.
Uh, yes, please, let's talk about this. What do you want to ask?
I am just, I am just curious if you could each say your reaction to that story in like thirty seconds. Because I already honestly wasn't really sure what to take from it or where I was supposed to end on the issue.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I would love to hear both of your takes on that briefly.
So I did not read that story, so you'll have to give me a date.
Okay.
I could, I could go for it.
Yeah, the general summary is that, you know, teacher absences have kind of increased since the pandemic. I mean, I think it's about eleven days, the average is, I think, eleven days now. Um, it's just like teachers aren't going to school. It influences how kids are doing. Kind of tied a correlation between.
It's in the name, teacher absences.
Yeah, increasing teacher absences. So I was so glad to see this story published because, and I'm not going to take thirty seconds, Sophie, I'll do my best. But I want you to hear the story. So my daughter arrived back from the pandemic into first grade. She was a kinder, online kindergartner. So that was like a whole experience. And her teacher was there until about mid-October. And then she decided she did not want to be back at school post-pandemic and she went on medical leave. She was the classroom teacher of record that year and the next year and never came back. And the whole time we had subs. So my daughter had kindergarten online and then first grade with, in the sub crisis, if you remember that from that year. Um, she had a rotating cat, I mean, someday it was the PE teacher for twenty minutes. And then the school nurse would pop by for a half an hour. So they had some adult in the room with them all day. That was how it was at first. And then they had like just a rotating cast of subs. We, in the end, got an excellent long-term sub who saved the year for kids like mine that are pretty high performing. But I know there's even kids now in fourth grade that were in that classroom and are still behind. So when I read that story, it really, really, really hit home with me. And, um, I know there's a lot of reasons for it. I am a huge supporter of paid family leave. I would love to see the impact that paid family leave has, is having on our school districts. Um, and what I think needs to be the answer is not, these are teachers and they can't have lives and they can't take care of their parents that are sick. I think instead what it needs to be is how do we have a better system for having long-term subs that are well-trained and like ready to go in? And sort of almost like a teacher corps that's like guaranteed work almost. So it's a little bit less like episodic. And we're like, hey, Jenny Lewis, that's an actress, whatever. You are a substitute and you are a full-time and we are going to plug you in where we have these longer-term absences that we see coming. So I really think that it's an opportunity to not necessarily come down on teachers taking time off, but really instead, how do we, um, come up with a solution so that when they are off for things that humans need to do, um, in the world, that we have a better system for making sure our kids don't fall through this, don't fall through the cracks?
Um, great, sorry. What twenty three kind of?
Was there any speculation in the article? Was there any information that's associated with why this might be the case? Like any about the absentee?
Mostly a pretty flat, like district administrator, say X, and then, um, you know, this is the, this is the result, you know.
Just sort of a number.
Yeah, I mean, I knew there was a teachers union rep who probably said some things.
No identification of like general reasons that teachers are.
In general, it was more of a data story, I would say.
Just more of a data story. So this is just a, it's a number that has manifested from somewhere. That's fine. Uh, I mean, yeah, that, that, that's how this happens a lot. So you can see where my, my natural reaction is, uh, which is to ask the question of, well, why does this happen? That's not an impossible question to answer. Uh, these are human beings. You can actually speak with them and collect that data anonymously in a way where you can actually get to, what is the root cause? I, I would happily speculate as to what I could guess what the root cause would be. You kind of speculated as some of them as well, is that there's the interference of regular day-to-day life. That happens to everybody. Um, and then making accommodations for when life interferes. Obviously, being an educator, being a teacher, um, there's a lot more visibility to it because you have responsibility to the kids in your classroom. Um, and so being out of work is one of those things that, um, you know, is much more high profile than, for example, if I miss a day of work, you know, um, I get to catch up the next day. It doesn't really work that way when you're an educator, right? You don't get that leeway. You don't get that freedom. So, yeah, I would just, I would be interested to know as to why. Um, because the thing I'm not going to do is, this is where this gets tough for me. This comes back to the question about the teacher's strike. You know, this is not an issue of the public versus educators. We're kind of being pitted against each other in this, in this battle, which is, just drives me crazy. Like, we're actually on the same side here, right? Like, parents are not the enemies of student, or sorry, parents are not the enemies of teachers. The union's not the enemy of the district. Like, we're not the problem. And so when this question comes up about absenteeism, here's what I hear. Aren't teachers terrible? They're not coming into work when they should. And to me, it's like, that's not the right statement. That's not the right question. Like, there's an overarching issue here that we're not addressing and I'd really like to know what that one is. And I can, like I said, I can speculate as to what that is. But it would be nice to know with some level of certainty.
Certainly. I just want some, two, like last minute, quick lightning round things. What is the school board, who's the school board member right now that you most admire?
I love J.J. Conceve.
Doesn't count.
Oh, really?
Unfortunately, someone who can vote unfortunate.
Okay, okay. Is everybody saying J.J.? So then you have to make this new one. Okay, okay. Um, no, J, student representative Conceve is awesome. Um, I'm going to go with, um, uh, Chair Wong. Uh, he's just been so helpful to me in getting on boarded and just has a really level head. Um, and I think really cares about, um, making sure that we're all um, working together, rowing in the same direction as best as he can.
I'm not really a fan of any one public figure, especially in civil service. It is a thankless job. That's what, you know, it's always been called a thankless job for a reason. And it's because you don't get the thanks for doing the job. Uh, and so when I think of like a fandom of someone on the board, no one in particular.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Um, and I know, I, Ken will have a more elaborate answer on this one, but what is an endorsement you've received that's, that you're the most proud of?
Oh gosh, you're making me go second? No, I think you go first. I would love to talk a little bit more about his position on that. Um, yeah, so I, I'm just going to, the, the honest answer is I was really thrilled to get endorsed by the Portland Association of Teachers. And I might not always agree with the teachers union. I'm sure they know that and I know that, that we will have our moments um, just because of differences of opinion on issues. But as somebody who is so closely connected to my school and to the staff of my school, I felt like that was really representative of that connection.
And what would you say is like a place of independence that you feel you have from them?
Yeah, um, I think one thing actually we have in common is I, I'm, I really do, that I think you'll agree with, um, is that I do really wonder why frankly, the Oregon Education Association um, isn't tougher on our legislators on school funding, um, which I think is just a huge issue. And so that's an area of disagreement where I'm like, hey, like, let's knock some more heads and try to get, in a nice way, of course, because it's me.
Sure.
Um, but because we need more funding for our schools. And I've seen that, in my opinion, I've just seen them be more, um, uh, low-key about that issue than maybe I would want to be as a former educator.
Uh, obviously strange answer since I'm sitting here in an endorsement interview. Anyone is, uh, more than, you know, uh, capable of providing me an endorsement anytime I want. It's just that I wouldn't really acknowledge it and tout it. Because in my lifetime following public service, one of the things that has just really gotten under my skin is public officials, how proud they are of the entities that endorse them. The public endorses you. You are a public servant. That is who you answer to. And so for me, that's something I believe so deeply in that, you know, when it came time to run for the board, for school board and this question came up of like, how are you going to raise money? How are you going to knock doors? Who are your foot soldiers? Who's going to be calling? Who's going to be doing all this stuff for you? You need endorsements in order to do that. And, and my reaction was, it's like, look, if I really want to get involved with this, if I really want to make a difference and I want to do it my way, part of that has to be that people need to know, especially people that don't typically vote. Best case scenario, ninety thousand people are going to show up for this election. A fraction of the registered voters that are covered by PPS, a fraction of the parents that are covered by PPS. I want all those people that don't vote, that normally wouldn't come out and cast a ballot specifically because they don't have a candidate that they think that they can believe in. I want them to know that's me. I want them to know that I am here to serve the public and the public's interest, especially as it's represented in kids going to school and getting an awesome education that you will always have. No one will ever take that from you. And so for me, that manifests in the form of just declining endorsements. Not, not, just not acknowledging them and leveraging them for what it could be used for, money and influence.
Sure, absolutely. Um, well, Sophie, do you have anything else?
Do you have any, have you received, I mean, even if you rejected the endorsements, have you received any endorsements?
Uh, not that I know of, no.
And have you proactively sought any other than this one?
No. And I wouldn't say I proactively sought, you, uh, you sort of reached out. I think I, uh, I sent out some emails to talk with people, but I've not been soliciting endorsements.
We email everyone to come to these.
Okay.
I'm Joanna.
What?
I'm good, Joanna.
Good. Um, okay, great. We have one final fun question. Yay, for the B A T endorsement, but no.
I show up to interview.
Oh, okay.
You put out their questionnaire and interview.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I am responding to all endorsement questionnaires, interviews. I want people to hear me. I want them to get to know me. I think that's critical. Um, but when it comes time for somebody to say, hey, we'd love to endorse you, I'd be like, that's awesome. You're free to say that. Unfortunately, I'm not going to participate in the apparatus associated with that endorsement. It's just not something I can do.
Sure. Great. I have one final fun question and it is, what, when growing up, what was your favorite childhood snack? Can we start with Kristi?
Oh, yeah.
I thought of something really weird. Oh my gosh, I probably shouldn't say it. It's weird. Um, I used to microwave Minute Rice and put lemon pepper on it. I can even remember the glass. And I would make it so that it was like a little bit overdone, so it was a little crunchy. That was my after-school snack. Um, I came home from school, I was a latchkey kid, so from a young age, I was coming home from school by myself and finding, um, finding sustenance. And yeah, it was Minute Rice, a little crunchy, lemon pepper.
That's great. I was using that same terminology. So latchkey kid, you know, mom was at work. So when I got home, I was allowed to, I was allowed to operate the microwave and the oven. So I either had.
Wow, the oven.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I had a lot of responsibilities as a kid. So, yeah. Uh, oven, oven was not off limits. It was electric, so. Totino's Pizza and Totino's Pizza Rolls, those would be, those are the go-tos.
Not in my other room.
Great. Well, thank you both so much for attending. Our endorsement issue will be out on April thirtieth. We don't tell people before, but you'll be able to see it print and online.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.